Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 2016, 9:00 AM meeting of the Classic School Committee with all members of the President to communicate his own roll call. Mr. Carr.
Present.
Mr. Dial.
Present.
Mrs. Leskey.
Hannah?
Mrs. Hannah is not present. She may be late. The Chair is present giving us a form of four out of five members, which means I will formally follow the meeting to order and ask all those who are able to please rise for recitation of our nation's pledge allegiance. Flag from the back there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thanks very much and welcome, everyone. I'll move right into public comment. This section of the agenda, or the meeting, rather, is reserved for questions or discussion points or comments that are not related to an item that's already scheduled to be discussed. It's on our agenda. So if you have something that is not on our agenda and you have a thought that you want to share, a concern, or a comment, please do so. I don't see any unexpected members in our audience. So this would apply to everyone that is watching virtually. And if you have utilized the Zoom link to access the meeting, then you can use the Q&amp;A feature to share your thoughts. You can just type in some thoughts and we'll be monitoring this periodically as well. So if you don't get this comment off in time, don't worry. I'll see it pop up and we will address it, but we'll give you one minute here to type something in if you're watching and you want to share a thought, please do so. In the meantime, I'll note that this meeting is being broadcast on Cohasset 143 TV. It's also being livestreamed on Facebook. And as I just noted, you can attend virtually by following the Zoom link that appears on our agenda. I don't see any questions or comments in the Q&amp;A section. So again, if you feel like you missed that opportunity, just type it in anytime and we'll get to it once we have a break in the proceedings here. From public comment, we'll move right into our invited guests. And our one and only invited guest is Amanda Fox, who is a member of our Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and she's here to provide an update from a student's perspective to the committee. Amanda?
My name is Amanda Fox. I'm a junior at Cohasset High School. One new change that has been put into place recently at the high school is the new phone ban. I think overall it's been pretty well enforced so far. I've noticed definitely more kids paying attention in class and just more engaged. I think at lunch, some kids have voiced opinion that they think it should be allowed, but there's very mixed opinions I've been hearing. Me personally, I think I've seen the most difference in class with all the kids. So yeah, I think it's going pretty well so far. Also, right now, it's the winter sports are wrapping up, and I know hockey is at their playoffs right now. I'm pretty sure they're winning 3-1 currently. And then the boys' basketball has their playoffs tomorrow, and then the girls' basketball have theirs Friday.
That's great. Thank you so much for that update, Amanda. Do any members of the committee have any questions for Amanda about her update or about any student-related issues you might have? We'll just go around in alphabetical order as usual. Mr. Carr?
None. My daughter is a senior and is remarkably compliant on her phone, which is, I think something's working, so that's great.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Dial, anything?
Nothing for me, Amanda. Thank you for the update.
Mrs. Leskey?
Thank you for the update. I'm just happy to hear that the phone sort of, I don't like it's called a ban, that putting the phones away for a bit of time when you're at school situation is sort of having the intended effect of increased engagement in academics and hopefully increased engagement socially at much, I do. I don't know if you're feeling that way, or if it's just that really kids feel like they need to decompress and look at their phones and connect at home and things like that, or if there is sort of more individual conversation and socializing.
Yeah, I think it's a mix of both. I think during lunch and utility, some kids use it as a break, but at the same time, I have noticed, I think, a bit more communication and interaction going on, especially during lunch.
It helps you digest better. You can check that fact.
Not on your phone during lunch.
Not on your phone during lunch.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Leskey. Mrs. Hannah appeared at 6:23. Welcome, Mrs. Hannah. Amanda, I don't have any questions other than, well, first of all, thank you for participating in Superintendent Shannon's Advisory Council. It takes a lot of extra time, and I think it's a great exercise in representing your classmates and their interest and also communicating some of the concerns to upper levels of our district's leadership. And I think it's probably a great experience for a young person that is on the brink of adulthood. To that end, I almost always ask our student liaisons if there's any, and this isn't meant to put you on the spot, you shouldn't feel pressured at all, but you also shouldn't feel reticent to or reluctant to share any concerns because we are genuinely interested in it and it's not going to get anyone in trouble or anything like that. But I always ask our student representatives if there's anything that maybe you didn't mention that isn't positive about the student experience right now, anything that you think there's maybe room for improvement and anything, anything that's on your mind whatsoever.
Yeah, I know at some of our meetings recently, we've talked about the curriculum, and a lot of people have been mentioning, I think, adding more variety to the curriculum and more like hands-on activities rather than just like packets and just more variety rather than the repetitiveness that I think happens in some classes. Another one would probably be just the grading classes. I think especially different teachers that teach the same class can have different grading and different teaching and activities. So just helping keep that consistent, I think, throughout the classes and teachers.
Okay. Could I ask you to maybe elaborate on both of them a little bit? So when you're saying more variety to the curriculum, are you talking about maybe, I don't want to put any words in your mouth, but I'm trying to just identify exactly what you mean. Are you saying like maybe a little bit more of a like dynamic experience, like not, like, can you maybe describe a little bit more what you mean? I just, I want to ask you a question, but I don't want you, I don't want to plant any ideas in your mind.
Yeah. Well, like currently, I know, especially in like my math class and like other people's classes, some are more like just lesson, pack and practice, lesson, and then like test. And then I also have other classes that, like for example, a science class I have, it's more of a lesson. We do some practice, but then there's also a lab that we learn through and maybe like a group project. So I think just adding more different activities than just the same pattern of practice lesson.
Okay, great job using those examples. That was excellent. That's exactly what I was looking for. And that helps us identify exactly what we're talking about. And then with regards to the grading, so are you talking about, and just to be clear, obviously, we're not looking for any teachers' names, anything like, we don't want to identify anyone, right? We're not looking to embarrass anyone or anything like that. But we're trying to figure out with the grading, do you mean that there are teachers that teach the same subject but apply sort of different grading standards depending on which section you're talking about, or they teach different courses? Like, I'm trying to, I'm confused what you meant by that.
Yeah. In general, I just heard, I've been hearing from a lot of kids that for a subject or a class that's the same level, and two teachers are teaching that same subject at the same level, that there's just inconsistency and that some kids believe that one class is harder than the other, even though they're supposed to be the same.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any follow-up questions for Amanda before we let her go? This was great, Amanda. You did a great job. Okay, seeing none, then, thank you so much.
Thanks, Amanda.
Appreciate it. You're welcome to stay and watch, but we imagine that will be more, so we're not throwing you out, bud.
Thank you.
Bye, Amanda.
Thank you.
Of course. Okay, Amanda is our only invited guest, so we'll move right into our Superintendent's Report section of the meeting. And I will therefore turn the meeting over to our Superintendent Schools, Ms. Sarah Shannon.
Great, thank you. So first of all, I would like to welcome everybody back from February vacation. I hope people had a chance to rest and relax and reset a little bit. I'd also like to thank all of our custodians for the work they did over vacation to sanitize and clean our schools. Leading into vacation, there was an influx of lots of viruses, and I think we're in a better place, and we hope that with what the custodians were able to do and with the warmer weather, that all of that starts to go away. I'd also like to take a moment and thank Officer Greg Taylor and Officer Greg Lorenz, our two SROs. February 15th, which happened to be over vacation, was National SRO Appreciation Day. And since this is our first meeting back, I wanted to recognize both Officer Taylor and Officer G. Low, which is what the kids at Osgood and Deer Hill call Officer Lorenz, for all that they do to protect our students and staff and really to build relationships with our students, to enhance both their in-school and their community experiences. Losing track of days, but yesterday, last night, we had our final feasibility study community forum. And so I have been communicating after each of those forums and sharing the updates from those forums in my newsletter. I will continue to do that this week, so people will have a chance to review the presentation that AI3 gave last night. It continues to share out what some of the conceptual options might be should we get invited into the MSBA core program process. And also last night, what was new was potential costs for a future building project. While no decisions have been made because we aren't a part of the core process with the MSBA at this point, the whole point of this study was to identify some actual options rather than continuing to have conjecture. And so AI3, I think, did a really nice job in presenting us with exactly what we've asked for and giving us a feasibility study report that will be finalized in the coming weeks, that we will share with the community, but that will be able to support our upcoming statement of interest that will be submitted by April 11th. I just want to thank AI3, specifically Troy Randall and Julie Rivera, who are two partners in that organization, for their partnership and collaboration, their professionalism and their design process and ideas. I think we landed in a place where we have some really good designs, we have some really good ideas and some options, and we no longer are living in a world of what ifs. We have some more probable options should we get accepted by the MSBA. And just as that process wraps up, we're ready to begin our strategic planning process. Our first meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee will happen next Tuesday, March 4th, and will continue through the end of May, when we expect to be here at a school committee to present to you our new strategic plan. We have a committee of approximately 32 people who represent you, the school committee, administrators, teachers, parents, and students, and we're all going to be working together to do this work. I'm really excited to have such a diverse working group to dig in and to plan the future of the Cohasset Public Schools. Yesterday, Dr. Scollins and I, along with our MECO Director, Elisa Gittens-Carl, attended the MECO Legislative Breakfast at the State House. Many state senators and representatives were in attendance with superintendents and MECO directors from across the state. We were there to hear both MECO's legislative agenda, asking for an additional $3.1 million to support the program, and to hear about some compelling research data that has revealed the significant impact that the MECO program has on students enrolled in their program. The MECO program is a program that not only benefits those students who are Cohasset students who reside in Boston, but also our students who reside in Cohasset. All of us benefit from the opportunity to build a diverse learning community, and we're going to be back at the State House on March 20th to continue to support and advocate for the MECO program. Finally, I want to take a minute to revisit last meeting's conversation about athletics. As I shared last week, I do believe the students who are involved in the athletic program are safe when they participate. That said, I know that there are, at the same time, some questions about the program with regard to some of our practices and policies. As our district, one of our goals this year has been to engage in the analysis of our resources. And so some of these reviews have been done internally, and some we've engaged outside consultants to support us. Given the conversation last, or a couple weeks ago, and our own desire to evaluate the athletic program against the new NIESC standards for athletics that have been created, Principal Scott and I have reached out to Mark Otto Vianelli, who is a former athletic director in Taunton and a designer of the new NIESC athletic standards, to see if he's able to do an independent evaluation of our program. The evaluation will include forums with students, parents, coaches, administration, and the school committee, as well as a document and financial review. Once we set dates with Mark, we will be publishing those dates to the entire community to encourage anyone who has anything to share to participate. He is able to start and perform this evaluation for us once we sign our contract. And at the completion of the evaluation, we will have both a written report and a presentation of findings to you at a school committee meeting as soon as he wraps it up. So if he finishes in May, it'll be in May. If it happens earlier, he'll come and present his findings to you at that time. Where we believe this process will help us independently identify the strengths and opportunities for growth in our athletic program, as our goal is to continue to grow and enhance the student athletic experience. The last thing I wanted to share, which is not part of my updates, but is something that has been asked for in the last couple of meetings since I've arrived and we've had conversations about field trips. I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay. As a school committee, you have, in the short number of months I've been here, approved several out-of-state and some out-of-country field trips as well. And as those discussions have happened, questions about what are the field trips that we offer across the district have come up. And I didn't know the answer because I'm new, and so I took the opportunity to ask all of the principals what the field trips are that we offer. And in those conversations, we talked about both off-campus field trips and on-campus field trips, because sometimes just as valuable as an experience is a speaker or a program that we bring to the district. And so our principals have filled out an overview of the field trips that we offer. And as I just sort of, you have hard copies of this, so you can review it at your leisure. But some of the highlights that I wanted to have as key takeaways are that, starting in first grade, every grade level has at least one opportunity for an off-campus field trip. They grow with students. So our first graders are taking field trips that are pretty local, they're staying in Cohasset. But you can see, by the time they get to second grade, they're going to Sharon, they're going to the Museum of Science. So they grow with our students so that by the time they get to high school, they're going to different countries and experiencing things of that nature. That there is a mix of in-house assemblies and external field trips to maximize experiences, to enhance the classroom curricula. And that this document, what it really showed to me is that it's a starting point for additional conversation and discussion. I think, and I've talked to the principals about this, that this gives us a chance to now talk about what's the purpose of field trips, how do we utilize them, how often, how much should we be going on field trips, you know, are there enough, are there too many? Those are conversations we need to have. So we're going to be continuing this conversation as a leadership team, and I think you'll find that we're going to come back to you at some point to talk about maybe how this, how we think this should evolve. But I appreciated the fact that you asked these questions because it was something I wasn't aware of, and I think it was really good information that was gathered. And I was surprised by how many field trip opportunities our students actually have across the district.
Thank you for that update, Superintendent Shannon. Any questions for Superintendent Shannon, moving around in alphabetical order? Mr. Carr?
No, I think if you took a minute to just look at this list, I mean, this is a fantastic thing to see the broad, you know, the spectrum of things that our students can do. It's great. And it's, it's just, it's a tribute to how much people care about making sure you get to see things outside the classroom as well. So it's just really well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mrs. Dial?
Great. Thank you for the overall update. Appreciate everything. Definitely appreciate the field trip thing, because that is something I personally asked for, and this is a great compendium. The one thing I'll note is just, and just by virtue of circumstance, I think that to my older son, in seventh grade, there had been times where he's not been able to, he's not had a field trip.
Yeah.
And so as you're thinking about and getting your hands around what the field trip policies are, just making sure that every, and it looks like there's plenty of room for this, that every grade level in every class in every grade does get an opportunity to have a field trip. As a matter of kind of district practice would be great. I stopped for a column of policy, but like, you know, just making sure we take intentional efforts to create those opportunities, because I think you hear from this committee all the time that those, and we just heard from Amanda Fox, those experiential learning experiences, that's terrible wording, but you get the point, are of high value to students. So thank you for putting this together. Very much appreciate it.
Yeah. And I would say that not all of them happened during COVID, and so it's been a work in progress to bring them back. And I think we're seeing more and more being added over time, because I think you're right, that there are some students who haven't had as many experiences. And I think all of us really value the opportunity that a field trip can bring to a student. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dial. Mrs. Hannah?
Yeah, just to reiterate that, I think that middle school in general, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, were the ones that suffered from COVID, like getting things like the aquarium and Museum of Science and all that canceled. So it looks like we're trying to get that, like even the, you know, we talked about it last time with Ms. Leskey, the Grand Canyon field trip, which is, was a voluntary, or whatever, it wasn't for everybody. But so I think, I think we had also talked about, like, could we look at grade levels, like what field trips they actually have gotten to do, and compare that and just make sure, like, when they go into high school, that maybe they're even, like, we add in a couple extra experiences for them or something from a field trip perspective to kind of help that side of it. So, because I think seventh and eighth grade absolutely have not gotten a lot of field trip experience. And then sixth grade, I think, has gotten a little bit, but not that much. And I just got the one on the Gillette Stadium, which I think's great, so.
Yeah. And those are definitely the conversations that we need to have now that we have this.
Have this, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah. And then I think from an athletics perspective, I appreciate what the, you know, what is trying to take place here with the investigator and everything. I think my concern is, is that there is more of a trust issue and parents and athletes willing to come forward with having their name attached to it. There's no way for them to come forward in an anonymous way, giving situational things, examples that have happened. And so I think this investigator can hold forums and everything. I think we're going to have a real problem of having parents come forward, students come forward, unless their kids have graduated and are out of the school system. And so I think we need to figure out, like, how do we get this information where their kids aren't the ones that are going to suffer from it? So.
That, I guess, go on that if I can, just a moment. Is there a way to have a way for the investigator to have kind of one-on-ones with parents or invite individualized communications?
Certainly ask them to do that.
Because maybe that's a way to kind of, and I can understand that there are people who are in an atmosphere of distrust. They may not want to speak in a forum and have their name attached to it, but certainly if we're paying for an independent consultant to come in, that could be a person who has, who can keep that confidentiality and help and give people a safe space to speak. That's a part of the scope.
Yeah. Or like an email. I don't know how we do it, but I don't have a solve for that, where people really actually feel like they can come forward anonymously. And I think when you throw situations, like, we need hard facts, we need situations. And unfortunately, when you have a situation, it becomes clear on who that student is or who that coach is or anything. And I think that's the hard challenge of doing this investigation, is to get that information.
And I'd also offer, and we talked about this a little bit before, but they say you have a conversation, people who are worried about it, they can certainly come to any member of the school committee. And, you know, we are literally their representatives. And so if they said, if they tell us, you know, hey, want to talk confidentially about a situation, we're going to honor that confidentiality. So we're also a resource for parents.
And I would just want, it's not an investig, it's an audit of the whole department versus an investigation, but also, he's a completely independent evaluator. He is not someone that either I or Principal Scott or Mr. Rotendi know. The only reason we know of him is because he developed, helped develop the NIESC standards, and Mr. Scott happened to see him at a conference where he was presenting them.
And I think that's an important fact.
So he is not connected to anybody in the district. And the forums are, you know, for people to come forward with that information. So I would encourage people that this is an independent person who's not connected to us in any way. He should be somebody who people feel comfortable talking with. And I can talk to him about, you know, the ability to set up one-on-one conversations, should somebody request that.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Hannah. Mrs. Leskey?
Thank you. I really appreciate this field trip look, but in my mind, when I looked at this list, and this is sort of contrary to maybe what everyone else was saying, is that I see a separation for me as a parent, but also as an educator, as a difference between events and opportunities and field trips. And I think some of what you, your comments towards the end of their presentation of the list, I think it sort of brought forward the idea of like, let's really look carefully at this, let's develop sort of a philosophy around why we leave campus, how often should we leave campus, where are we going when we're off-campus? I don't want to paint too broad of a stroke, but I think many of our students had the opportunity to see the Paul Pratt Library before they even enter pre-K. They run wonderful programs, and I think that that's, for example, a community resource that while there are different programming that they can do there, the fact that several grades go, and, I mean, kids walk in there like they own the place. They love it. I just feel like this could be more robust, given we are so close to Boston and we have public transportation. And I know that this sounds crazy, but you can take kids on the commuter rail and take them to the Museum of Fine Arts and do all of those things. It does require, you know, a little forethought and some bravery and some really working with kids and getting appropriate chaperones. But I'd love to see the district move in a direction that really more broadly utilizes those resources available to us, particularly with our suburban location. I just think there are just amazing things for our students to learn that are even free, Harvard libraries, at the Boston Public Library. Just the resources available are incredible. Boston Symphony does student programming, just in all directions, and I think our student population would really benefit from that. That being said, I think this, knowing where we are and knowing where our starting point is, is absolutely the best thing ever. And I also know that when I was a teacher, I was most exhausted the day after, the afternoon after a field trip, I felt like I had been to battle. So I know that it's an undertaking, and I don't want to diminish, just like, oh, yeah, just take the kids on the train. But I do think that, kind of thinking outside of the way in which the district has operated to this point, it's worth at least a conversation.
That would help the bus situation.
Yeah. I took kids on the train all the time.
I did.
You have to get them to the train, though, so ironically still need the bus to get them to the train.
Oh, true. Good point.
Yeah.
They can bike with Mr. You.
We're our sidewalks committee. We're sort of sidewalks committee together.
Thank you, Mrs. Leskey. My first question Superintendent Shannon relates to the Medco programming and what's that?
Just get Ted.
Mr. Carr went first.
Oh, good. I'm sorry. Riveting. You didn't miss anything.
But thank you for that. My first question relates to the Medco programming that's coming up. Is that, so I have attended in the past. It sounds like one thing you've already went to. It wasn't two-fold last time. So is the event that's upcoming, the advocacy day?
That's what we did before. I don't know that they're calling, are they still calling it that?
I don't know.
I can't remember, but yes, but it's similar to what we.
We're going to be meeting with the representatives?
Correct. So we'll have our set times and.
So I, one shortcoming I found with our participation in that last time is our failure to bring students. And it's not a huge amount of students, but I'm sure that, and I think it's appropriate for secondary school students. But I'm sure that Mr. Mills or Mr. Scott would be willing to identify students that might benefit or, or could participate in that process. It's a really great experience for kids. And I noticed that some districts at Dr. Scholz, I'm sure noticed as well. I think we actually talked about it last time, had brought their students. And it is such a wonderful opportunity for them for a number of reasons. I will also likely go again, but it's, it's, it's a great experience. So consider that and maybe we can, I think we have the time to make that happen.
Oh, yeah.
With regards to the field trips, Mrs. Leskey, per usual, stole a little bit of my thunder there. I agree with some of her sentiments. However, I wanted to, so I feel like there's kind of four different categories, right? There's, we have on-campus programming, we have co-hasset site visits, which I barely want to call field trip. Then we have field trips in the true sense of the word. And then we have trips, like one-off trips that are available, like the, the, the traveling trips, right? That aren't necessarily, that's not like a class-wide experience that requires a financial investment. So I, I would like to segregate this list into those categories to see, that'll help us identify deficiencies a little bit better. I also 100% agree, well, I don't necessarily agree, but I feel like the buses might be easier just from an efficiency perspective, although the experience might be good. I don't know whether, I, I don't know the logistics of that, like the, the teachers with the trains. I don't know. Could be a good, could, could be a good, could be a good experience for the kids if we could pull it off.
Students, you are, you, it's free.
There's also both.
So, and, and maybe the commuter rail may be better than the subway because I feel like it's, it's easier for the, for the chaperones, whether they be teachers or parents, whoever, to ensure that everyone's on there before the train is leaving, whereas the subway is sort of a quick situation. So it might be a little bit more difficult to marshal a large number of students, but the, the commuter rail may be more conducive to that. But that's not really my hill to die on. My major issue is I just see a, and I think Mrs. Leskey alluded to this, if not expressly mentioned it. There's, I, I think there's like a, a void of Boston trips. We need to get into Boston more specifically, something that is, is, is in line with the current curriculum. So we're talking about like civics, you know, law, history, arts, things like that. So I, like, there's no trip to the State House, there's no trip to the Supreme Judicial Court. There's, you know, I saw Freedom Trail with a question mark, thinking like, we're going to do something like that for fifth graders in the future. I feel like many levels can benefit from the Freedom Trail, probably fifth at the earliest because of the being on the street and walking around Boston. So the maturity developmental stage that they're at, I think is probably appropriate to start at fifth, but like many students could, could benefit from that Freedom Trail. I mean, it is a treasure that we have here. The USS Constitution is, is not on here. So we need to embrace Boston a lot more. We need to do that. And I also, as far as the trips, like the offsite trips go, I think we, we did a DC one or it's happening soon. We, we approved one in the recent, I don't remember.
Yes.
We, we recently approved a DC one, I thought.
No, remember they talked about they were going to try.
Where, you're going to see one come through, but it's optional and it's for a small highlight group. I don't want to steal their thunder for when they come.
Sure.
But it's really designed to provide an opportunity for students to visit a couple HBCUs and to go to the African-American Museum while they're down there and do a few other things. And it's cross-grade level. They will share, Alisa and Jenna will, will be coming to share that with you.
Are we sure that we didn't, like, I thought there was like a Caribbean one that we thought was too expensive and we asked them to reconsider and then they did a DC one.
That was the discussion with.
There was a DC trip.
Okay.
Same thing, it was small. It was, for anybody interested, they ended up taking 25 students.
Yes, that's.
So it was actually because of the timing.
Mr. Erlinson, wasn't it?
Mr. Erlinson, and he actually took them after school ended.
Yes.
Just with them cast testing and whatnot. We couldn't schedule it before.
Yes.
And it was a success, it was a successful trip. It was a small group.
That was the one that the kids deemed as the replacement to the Grand Canyon one, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then this year, there is no trip that they're doing that. Okay. So that was what started that whole conversation last time.
Sorry, I didn't know that.
So that's okay. There may not have been a way for you to know that, but we need to do more of that. DC is, we really, really need to get our kids like, you know.
The United Nations, there's all sorts of cool stuff.
Sure. I just think DC especially and Boston is easy. We just need to do it. We just need to embrace it. I'm just looking at that list and I, I just, I had to agree with, with Mrs. Leskey that I, I see a lot of shortcomings there. And I don't want to be negative, but I'm, I'm just, I'm being critical where I think it's necessary. I think we can do better there. And so let's try, it sounds like Superintendent, you guys were already planning on reevaluating. So, but that is the, that's the, that's the feedback I would give you just as you, as you, as you begin that process. Okay. Thank you for your report Superintendent Shannon.
Sorry, on the segmentation, I think to like field trips, I mean, the field days, I don't really, maybe it's like activity as opposed to like a field trip, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was suggesting the four categories, right? There's onsite programming, there's local visitation, there's, you know.
But I think that, I think that's like an activity. I don't think it's an education. Like there's onsite programming that's like an educational value where field days, like let's have fun together, right?
Versus like a Museum of Science coming in and doing
Yeah.
programming or theater company coming in, right? I think you're, I just making this.
I just, I think we have work to do, right? Like this was our initial attempt at providing a, just a general list of what we offer. And there's a lot more conversation to be had after this.
And we have one comment from a family.
Perfect.
Sylvia family, if they could send their address along, that would be great. And the comment is, thank you for all the field trip. My kids love all of them and appreciate the opportunity. Any idea if the middle school will be going off campus for any field trips in the future? Thank you.
Here's a group going to Gillette. It's in the next.
Group going to Gillette next week, that's sixth grade and then eighth grade. We have a trip to Treetop Adventures in Canton, which is sort of a team building, end of the school year celebration. Good help from CDF in the past.
Two off-campus trips coming up.
Planetarium's listed as well for grade seven.
On the seventh grade.
Yeah, the teacher that organized it, that's out on leave right now, so it just came in update. That's a planetarium in Quinney. It's supposed to Boston. Unfortunately, we found that getting in and out is not often enough time to, with our buses, to be able to get to the planetarium in Boston. So we use the Quinney one.
So Sylvia's just followed up their address, Forty Pharaohs Lane. They also asked, are we talking specifically to the seventh grade?
They did. They asked, yes, and that was just the answer from, that's all they lost. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is the Sylvia, sorry.
Just to follow up on that, as far as maybe, because I have seventh grade as well. So is the seventh grade planetarium trip up in the air?
It just hasn't been announced yet.
Oh, it hasn't been announced. Okay, so we'll build it up. Okay.
All right. We're going to move on from the field trips now and we're going to move into the next block of the agenda, which is teaching section. Turning the meeting over to our assistant superintendent, Dr. Leskey, for some updates.
Right. So really the focus tonight will be the presentation of program studies for the high school and the middle school. But some just kind of free information, just as a reminder, one of the things that you'll see for the high school is some language around competency determination. Because if you remember in the fall, the state voted and so MCAS is no longer going to be part of consideration for, for competency determination. So Principal Scott has conferred with his staff, he's also spoken to principals and has come up with some language and we've reviewed it around what that might look like. The Department of Ed recently has decided to do some work on it as they realize that that law changes things and every district making their own determinations. So they're in the process right now of doing that. And so I'm sure that there may be some changes. But what we are, are presenting in the program of studies is what we have right now. And so we may have to come back in the spring on some determinations. They're going to make some recommendations, they said by May. So we'll see what happens with that. And then one of the big pieces for the middle school is that, and across the district, but you're going to see this in the middle school program of studies, is that last year there was a comprehensive health and physical education standards. And so those frameworks have made some changes around what is taught at what time in all the grades. So the department as a whole has been working on it since last year, but you're going to see some changes in the program of studies for the middle school. So that's the, the big news that we have around teaching.
Thank you, Dr. Scholz. Any questions, Dr. Scholz, Mr. Carr? Mrs. Dow? Mrs. Hannah?
I'm Ben.
Mrs. Leskey? Okay. Thank you very much. So moving on, we have the presentation of our capacity middle school program studies by the school's principal, Principal Mills. We'd ask him to have a seat at the front table here to present that for us.
Lord, Inspector.
I don't think we'll be confused, but.
All right. Thanks for having me. And as Dr. Scholz said, the program of studies for next year, for 25, 26, is mostly the same as it was for this year and the changes, as I described in my document. It really has to do with the wellness curriculum and DESI did put out new frameworks in 2023. With Dr. Scholz, the department's been working on packing those standards, looking at what's being taught and making changes as necessary. So that's kind of what I lay out. It is important to note, I think, if you haven't seen the standards, unlike other standards, which might be laid out on a grade basis, so that fourth grade math students should be able to demonstrate these things. The wellness frameworks are actually grouped six through eight, around seven guiding principles and much more general. So it gives the teachers the ability to sort of make sure that the frameworks are represented. There, there they are. So there, yeah, there are seven practices and then overall 24 subtopics essentially under each one. So they've laid out a scope and sequence that covers all three years, covers horizontally all seven practices. And there's some repetition there. For instance, sixth grade is the kids work on bullying. Well, that is around decision-making, but it also connects to some of the frameworks around social awareness and self-awareness and information and resource seeking. So you see it in multiple places only because they connected it to various standards. I think one of the big takeaways is that the, both the frameworks, but also it's, I think what the teachers believe in is things like bullying and, and connected like cyberbullying. They've covered it in each three, each of the three years. So the kids are getting it to an increasing depth because it really affects the culture of the school and the safety of individual students and groups of students. So they've done a great job with that. So if we jump into the changes document, if you don't mind. What the, I laid out was a, a table where it didn't affect every unit, but with some units, language was removed. But really what happened is like with the first aid unit, it's on page one, what the teachers really did is they didn't, they haven't stopped teaching those things, but they created language that maybe connects more explicitly to the curriculum framework. And I cite in the document where you would find those things. So underneath, like remove the follow-up learning outcomes. Four, four bullets there. They haven't stopped doing those things. They've just changed the, the word for the program studies. Same thing with bullying. They didn't, it's not that they weren't teaching it, but they added a couple of items that really, I think nicely reflects the frameworks, dimensions of wellness and assertiveness, same thing. They're just sort of, I've, I've shown the language that they removed and then how they've refined in most cases and connected to the frameworks. I will certainly walk through each bulleted item if you want, or if the group wants to sort of look at each one and then ask questions, I'm happy that way. There are a lot of sort of refinement changes and.
No, I, I appreciate that suggestion, Principal Mills. I think everyone had the materials ahead of time. And so if anyone has any questions, I'm sure they'll be prepared to ask them right now as we go around, once you complete the presentation. So is that, if you're not going to go read through the document.
Yeah, it's really, like I say, the biggest pieces, they introduced bullying in each, each year. And they've made some modifications. The last piece as far as presentation, they, in eighth grade, they've worked in a, a unit that they refer to as sort of Believe in You. It's a curriculum that encourages healthy relationships and self-acceptance. It also helps them achieve some of their bullying goals. And that's done through explicit skill instruction as well as a lot of reflective writing. I think one of the things that is a strength in our wellness curriculum is that there is a lot of coincidence with literacy goals. And whether it's eighth, sixth graders reading a novel, whether it's the eighth grade unit that's really based around reflectiveness. I think the teachers are doing a good job reinforcing those literacy skills. And then this is a work in progress. It's, it's a multi-year group that's going to be reviewing the curriculum. At this point, they've really focused on the wellness learning objectives. As their work continues for the rest of this year into next year, they'll be focusing on the phys ed standards. And hopefully I'll be here, same time next year, talking about the changes or the refinements to the physical education standards.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mills. Any questions for Principal Mills on the program studies as presented this evening or highlighted changes as presented? Mr. Carr?
I just think it's such a nice compliment of things at the right age, I think, on self-awareness and, you know, like bullying, it's all related. And I think, I think it's a great age to sort of get that message across. So. Yeah. I think the frameworks, they're, they're rewriting the states, or DESI's rewriting for the 2023 update. I think they did a really good job emphasizing those things and how recognized is important. Holistically, we have to think of kids academically, but we have to think of them emotionally, you know, physically, spiritually, how they feel about themselves. And I think the frameworks really encourage teachers to work at it in the curriculum. And then with the process of Dr. Scholz's stewards, year to year, they do a great job of going back and asking themselves, are, you know, are we teaching what we should be teaching? Are we, you know, why are we teaching this? Should we maybe shift to this? This is what our kids need now. So the curriculum's reflexive and alive.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Style?
No questions for me. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Dow. Mrs. Hannah?
This is great. I appreciate it for sure. I'm curious. I know there's like a bullet in here around use of technology.
Yeah.
And I have to assume like the cyberbullying, all that also carries it. So I guess comment is, I love that it's coming in in sixth grade because the reality is, is even if they don't have phones, they're. because the reality is, is even if they don't have phones, they're on iPads at home and other things. So I think that that's important. And then just curious, it doesn't like call it out. I think I'm just assuming that it's kind of just, especially based off of anxious generation, like we're kind of weaving it all in. So by the time they get to the high school, there's kind of like, it's embedded, right?
Yeah, they're much more critical users. And the unit, they, they refer to it as sort of media messages. But each year it becomes a, is, is a cycle through. It teaches kids at an increasing level of rigor and a higher level of analysis to look at the way media affects them as individuals and certainly affects the way they feel about themselves with images that they're shown about what, for instance, like beauty is supposed to look like. And then lastly, its effects on their relationships. So and once again, I applaud both the frameworks that the teachers are building the curriculum of and the teachers do a fantastic job at it.
And are they going into like specific apps like Snapchat?
Yeah, they do, and they talk about, at one point, they just recently did a discussion of the, the old image was, you know, your digital footprint. So they actually have the kids draw a footprint and then list or draw the apps that you use and then talk about specifically unpack kind of what, what each of them might do or pitfalls or you know, how they get used, what are the, some of the dangers. So they become, like I say, critical, more critical users of the technology. I will throw in a plug while we're talking about it. I think CMS in collaboration with our PSO is, we've invited Elizabeth A. Winder from Bridgewater State's Aggression Reduction Center. She's really an expert on bullying and healthy adolescent use of technology. She's going to come to be available at, in the auditorium, April third. It's an evening that we're inviting certainly any parents, but especially Dear Hill and CMS parents to attend to learn about how to become, how to develop savvy strategies around supporting their students using devices. And the PSO has also created a student event, actually in the Learning Commons of Mystery, a Mystery Night. So envisioning Dear Hill or CMS parents who want to bring their kids, send them in with the High School's National Honor Society and some volunteers to do the Learning Commons thing allows them to go in and enjoy the presentation. So we're trying to continue the work that the, the community really began with anxious generation.
That's great.
Yeah, so April third, look for the newsletters, save that date.
Ms. Leskey.
Just, just a question, but one, I love the, the format because it actually was really interesting to see the changes side by side and where they went. So I appreciated that format. I'm wondering if under the umbrella of assertiveness and relationships and believing in yourself, is there also sort of teaching children assertiveness within sort of romantic relationships? You know, sort of protecting our own bodies about saying no to being touched if they don't want to be touched and things like that? Or when does that, does that not happen in the middle school?
It gets introduced in terms of just assertiveness and it could be in any relationship. And then in the ninth grade health curriculum, then that's taught even a little bit more explicitly. As it's, it's just, it's who we are as a school and a culture that students don't tend to start to develop those relationships. So we, we focus on making sure that they have those skills that can be applied to any relationship. And then at the high school, they've become a little bit more pointed about the romantic relationships.
Have you written one off?
Yeah, I agree, twelve, twelve is all covered. Twelve especially partners with one love, then the kids are going off to college.
Thank you, Ms. Leskey. Principal Mills, the only question I have is the scope and sequencing document that was displayed earlier on the screen. Was that, it had the three grade levels, was that linear? In other words, the, was it in order of, of sort of chronological order in terms of when those concepts were presenting?
No, you know what it is? That scope and sequence is a document they developed as they were working with a new organization of the frameworks and the seven practices. And they wanted to make sure, do our units, like, are we connecting? Are we hitting all of the seven practices? Because like I say, there, there aren't seven practices for sixth and another one for seventh, another one for eighth. The state's given the framework six through eight. So what they did is they sort of laid out what are the sixth grade units? And in that, which objectives are we achieving to make sure that they're doing a full job of covering all the, all the practices?
Okay, is there, is there some consideration given to the timing of some of the topics? So by way of example, puberty, sixth grade, makes sense to me to cover that towards the beginning of the year as some students will be experiencing, you know, early stages of that earlier on rather than waiting until the end of the year to sort of touch on that. I mean, is there any, that's just an example, but like, is there consideration given to the timing?
Yeah, I don't have the, I'm sorry.
I think you should do six Dear Hill in grade five.
Yeah.
Right, so have that and then and then it rolls into the following year. I don't know that you have the actual, you don't have the lesson plan, it's just an overall.
Yeah, and typically the overall, because wellness incorporates both the, that, these health objectives, but also physical education. Very often at the beginning of the school year and at the end of the school year, when the weather's the very best, that's when they work on those standards and wellness class typically is outside. And then from November really until New England spring, you know, it's April, that's where they focus on the, these wellness standards.
Okay.
And they tend to be indoors, except once, once a week, they'll either go to the gym or the fitness center for, usually referred to as like Workout Wednesday, just so the kids are still getting some physical activity. I don't have the time and the, the length of time spent on each unit. But it's something I could, I could check to see.
We're working on it with our curriculum mapping too. So there'll be, there'll be a document that everyone will be able to see, but it probably won't have as much detail. But parents can always ask there.
Yeah, I don't think it's like critical. It was just, it was just something I thought of when I was looking at that. Like it might make sense to think about some of the, the timing of it. But it sounds like there, there is some thought in terms of, you know, some of the things are better served outdoors, things like that. So I understand. Okay, well, thank you very much, Principal Mills, for that presentation. Along the lines of the, what they call media messages, I think, or something like that. We had, prior to your joining the district superintendent Shannon and Ms. Hannah's joining this committee, we had looked into like a digital citizenship curriculum at the elementary level in terms of trying, and in fact, we had even had like a meeting with a representative from Norfolk County District Attorney's Office in terms of trying to develop some programming around responsible use of technology and understanding, you know, in a, in a developmentally appropriate manner for elementary school students, understanding the permanence of some of the messaging that appears in social media and online and, and the damage, the long lasting, you know, damage can do. Because we were encountering situations where students at a very early age, even at like the third grade level, I think probably earlier, but at least we were seeing it percolate at the, sort of in the, in the sort of collide with this, with the school community in, in the, in the Dear Hill levels. So we wanted to explore what we could do there. And the District Attorney's Office ended up not being a fruitful avenue. And I, so because there's always so much going on, I think that effort got a little bit sidelined. But I think it's a really important one to continue to pursue. Because I think we will see that. I think we will see those types of issues to continue to surface, probably in, in, in greater numbers or in greater volume as, as time goes on. And it can, I think, really damage the school community. So maybe we can just, I, I'm just throwing it out there because I, I feel like this is, it's great. We, we, I think we, there is some, some robust programming around those concepts in middle school and, and the high school right now. But I think that those issues, which I forget when they had, it was the last academic year or the year before, there were some, some, you know, not insignificant issues that caused problems for our elementary students. And we want to avoid that. So maybe we can start to regroup on that.
We are in Common Sense Media, that's a great site, everyone should, they have a curriculum and I just saw that, some pieces to it. So it would be, you know, worthwhile to look at those. And I knew that they do use that at the elementary level and they do use it. And they do talk about digital citizenship and then social media and they starting to do that. But yeah, I think it's important to look at, look at those pieces and.
Yeah, just maybe continue to reevaluate what we're doing at Dear Hill, just to make sure that it's, it's meaningful and value laden. So that we're avoiding those situations in the, in the future. Because like especially at that point, I mean, it can always be extremely traumatic. But, you know, it's just the the technological competence or capabilities far exceeds the emotional, the ability to emotionally confront the consequences at that age especially. So I, I'd like us to be really sensitive to that and make sure that there's something, like I said, really meaningful in that, in that curriculum. I'm, I'm happy to talk more, but it sounds like Dr. Collins is, you know, we're looking at that, but please let's be really sensitive to that. I mean, you know exactly the issue is, you and I had directly dealt with it and we sat on that in that meeting with the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office. So you know what I'm talking about. Yes, I know, really high hopes, I know, I know.
You know, parent, because that was the other piece too, is, you know, having someone be able to speak to parents too, right? Because it's a community.
Yeah, it was, we, we had high hopes there, it just didn't, it didn't work out. So I don't want to just let that, I don't want to let it die because the Norfolk County District Office didn't want to move forward with it. All right, well, thank you very much, Principal Mills.
Do you want, do you vote to accept the program studies or?
We, we, Ms. Hannah, do you have some?
No, I.
We did not mark it on the agenda to vote.
Okay.
So we didn't, we didn't mark it for a vote.
Yeah, so, well, also. So here's an interesting thing. In Canton, we weren't voting on them, but so maybe that's my mistake, if we were voting on them here.
Yeah, to be fair, I'd be fine voting on it next meeting. I'd like to spend a little, I loved the presentation, but like, I like to look at the stuff and digest a little bit. And then also I think there's a whole program of studies book that is there, so I can take.
There is, and so, Principal Mills, yours is updated with the changes.
Correct.
But the high schools is still what it, there's no changes made to that because Principal Scott is waiting for you to approve those changes. All right, but you'll have, you have both in the package, they're large documents.
The, the fact remains that it's not marked in the agenda, so we can't take a vote because it wasn't, we didn't notify the community that that was the case. So we can do it next time. And, and, and we'll, you don't need to, I don't, we don't need another presentation. We'll just, we'll just be able to vote because we'll mark it up for a vote. And, and it may be prudent to do with that anyway, because everyone had just seen it presented and it can sit in and then, or people, if people can, it can sink in rather for our viewers. We can do that.
Happy to answer questions if people have.
Fear not though, Principal Mills, we won't make you come to two school members. Though we love having you. But, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Next up, we have Principal Brian Scott to present the high school.
Dr. Scott, I'm going to pull up the memo. If I could, I'd like to make a comment on athletics, if the community would allow it. I know that's an up and down the agenda, but.
I, I, I would not want to raise that right now, Principal Scott, because it's just not on the agenda. But if you would like us to put it on the agenda, I can put it on the agenda for a future meeting.
I just wanted to make, just wanted to make a comment, but if that isn't the time, that's fine too.
I feel the reason is, obviously, this committee holds you in high regard. I, I just, I, I feel like a comment could then spark other comments. And then the next thing we know, we're discussing something. And, you know, so why don't we put it on the agenda for a meeting that you feel that you can come? It can be next time, whenever, just talk to me and I'll put it on there.
Sure.
I just, that has been a, and, and I'm likely going to recuse myself from any of that. So Mr. Dial is going to chair that portion, portion of the meeting because I feel conflicted. So just talk to me, we'll put it on the agenda, it's for next time or whenever you want. And, and then, then we'll, we'll have a discussion.
Totally fine.
All right.
I just feel like obviously it's all a reflection on me, it's all my, my, so at some point.
I, I, I completely understand, I completely understand. So let's, let's get it on there and we can have a, that's why I feel like if we start talking about it, it's gonna, it's gonna become a discussion. And I just don't want that to go on the agenda.
Fair. So two things in the program studies. One, Dr. Collins alluded to is the competency determination language. And competency determination goes back to Ed reform in nineteen ninety-three when the MCAS was developed and later made a graduation requirement to pass. And the purpose of the MCAS at the time was to align schools across the state with common standards to make sure that everyone had basically baseline of what earning a high school diploma entailed. You have your state requirements and you have your local requirements. Our local requirements have always far exceeded the state requirements. So the competency determination initially was just an add-on that students also have to demonstrate mastery of the MCAS itself. With the vote in November, it took that graduation piece away. And the state has asked us to basically describe how we are going to show that we've met that standard in the absence of the test. Which we very easily do. So the only requirements that the state has is algebra one, geometry and tenth grade English. I've added on their algebra two because I think any high school diploma, a kid should have a fair working knowledge of algebra two. Like, you know, even as an English guy, I think that's the most important class from logic perspective in the entire school. So I've added that on for consideration. And the other piece that I added on for consideration was around taking the MCAS itself. Now, I know there was a little bit of confusion and I'm going to defer to the committee because I think you have a better sense of what the voters in Cohasset voted for. We're still required to take and participate in the MCAS. We're still held accountable to the MCAS measures. And we benefit pretty substantially from that. And families benefit substantially from that when it goes to colleges. Because that, for some schools, many schools, our stature as a, as a high performing school translates into tens of thousands of dollars in college merit. So what I've added, and it's not a hell I'm willing to die on, but I do think it's interesting to consider. And I've talked to some other principals in the South Shore schools. I would like to add that students, at least by the, if they're a student up until the tenth grade, that they participate in MCAS. Because I think that that, whether they pass it or not is irrelevant. But I do think that requiring students to participate in it will help us our accountability. And I think collectively, although it's not maybe ideal for an individual student, I think collectively our student body benefits and I think our families benefit financially if nothing else. So those are the two pieces that I've added on to kind of the state requirements in terms of the competency determination.
All right, so let's start there. Does anyone have any questions? You can just fire it, Will, regarding the competence determination, comments that Principal Scott just expressed.
I, I'll start. Agree on algebra two, and I appreciate, as an English person, you, you recognize that's, that's important. Also looks like you've added some physics and science.
So the state requirements are just that you have to be competent in one of the major lab sciences.
So we got those, so that's, that's good. On the MCAS comment, it's a, it's a potentially politically loaded discussion. So I'll just lay out my own personal view that I was supportive of the MCAS as a graduation requirement. I think it's good to have an objective standard across the state, as far as spoken, it's not there. I, I'm not sure, and I want to think about it, and I'd like your reaction to this. But when we're talking about graduation requirements, things that someone has to do to, to demonstrate the competency of, you know, a, a high school graduate, I don't think that squares with having taken the MCAS. You know what I mean? It's, it doesn't, just because you're taking the test, doesn't mean, if, just because I haven't taken the test, doesn't mean I can't be competent to graduate. I agree that all of our kids should have to take it, but I don't know if this is the location for that requirement. And I guess I'd like, I'd like your thoughts on that.
I don't disagree with you. And again, I, I'm, I don't have a particular bent one way or the other. I think when you, I think it's a mistake that. I think when you, I think it's a mistake that the MCAS had to require passing that as a sign of competence in general, because I think, and I've said this kind of publicly, if that's all you need to graduate, we should just stop school at that point and save a bunch of money, right? Having said that, I think it's the only way that they could have some teeth in the exam where people took it seriously. So in the absence of that as a, as a measure, I think our collective participation in that is only beneficial and I wouldn't want people to think that, that there's no ramifications for opting out. Now, there's always exceptions that we can make.
I, I guess what I would, what I would say is I support the goal. I want, I, I, I think it's a valuable tool. And, and, you know, as we know, as we've worked together for years, it helps us benchmark our students, helps us find gaps in our education, helps us make our program better. So I think it's a valuable tool and I've talked to parents who've, who've had their kids not take the test and I, I, I feel like it's kind of, we all don't do as well when that happens. So I would like for us to think about in the absence of it being a graduation requirement, ways to encourage or require people to take it seriously. I just need to think a little bit more about whether or not including is a competency determination for graduation is the right, is the right.
Yeah, for sure. I don't know where else we would include that. I mean, you know, the state says everyone has to participate now.
There's no opt-out, there's no.
Right, there's, there's no such thing now, having said that.
We get penalized if you don't.
The reality of it is that, you know, that it's a testing window if you don't show up for it, if you don't show up. I do think it's different in high school than it is at some lower levels too because of the way that the high school transcript has for colleges. So it is a little bit different than opting out of third grade test or something like that. But again, I, I, I put it out there for consideration, mul on it, you know, because I don't disagree with you.
It's, it is, I, I'll just close by saying I think it's a real issue and maybe we should think about if not this, are there other, are there other places? And I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head either, but I mean, you guys know what the various inflection points would be better than I would, so.
And I don't think our kids will take it seriously, I think they do, they have a kind of win-all test mindset.
Are you saying like other places, like it would be administered, like right now it's administered on a school day? Or are you saying like it would be like a Saturday administered? It just wouldn't be this, but it would still.
If someone, if someone just went through the, somehow arranged their life so that they went through all of school and never took the MCAS because they just didn't show up in the testing window, then, you know, if they, we could say that they, they can't graduate if that's, or they, they can't demonstrate the competency.
But you're right, participation is not a major component.
Any other questions for Mr. Scott on the competency determination piece?
The only other change that we have, and it's not so much, it's a change, but it's more of a realignment. What I've talked to the talking heads about and talked to our school council are something called, we're going to call it pathways. Now, in edgespeak, pathways typically refer to career and technical education, which we don't really offer. So a lot of state pathways have trades, you know, that lead to internships, that lead to jobs. Here, because of our community makeup and because of the types of courses that we have and because of block schedule, the block allows for about twelve extra courses. And so what I've talked to people about is bundling some of those extra courses into like-minded disciplines. So if someone's interested in finance and they take economics and they take, you know, personal finance and accounting, if they take twenty-five credits worth of courses in the same type of discipline, they could potentially almost like consider it a college major or a high school major, they could have a concentration in one of these, these areas that could then end up in a fourth quarter or, you know, first semester independent study for seniors where they could demonstrate the cross connections that they've learned over the four years taking a variety of courses. I've identified six or seven, school council had a great idea that if, if students wanted to identify and bundle them in different ways, that they should make a pitch and see if they can do that and it would, you know, ultimately result in a capstone project. Now, whether that's a presentation, you know, a position paper or something else. I think it's a great way for students to kind of dive a little bit more deeply and figure out if they like it or not. You know, if you think you want to go to Babson, do business page and done accounting, statistics and economics and don't particularly succeed in it, then maybe that changes your opinion of Babson. On the flip side, if you are very well versed in that and, and can demonstrate a capstone, I think that's a very attractive application add-on for students to show their, their interest and ability and commitment to it.
I love that.
So any questions for Mr. Scott or comment on, on the pathways piece?
Would they, and I haven't read through this part of it, but so essentially if you pick one of these, would you have like an advisor kind of guiding through it?
Yeah, so with any independent study, you need a faculty advisor. So if you're going to go into engineering, you might take, you know, Mr. Sears might, might head it up. If you were to take something in civics and legal studies, it might be somebody from the social studies department. But there's all kinds of cross-discipline kind of pollinations and really it could be anybody overseeing, you know, your research or you know, vetting your research, coming up with thesis, coming up with evidence to support your, your thesis and, and coming up with a, you know, particular product.
And Principal Scott's done a lot of work with his team around really tightening up what an internship, what is an independent study, what are the requirements that you must do? So a lot of that work's been done over the past couple of years.
Yeah, and it could very well lead to an internship.
It could.
You know, right now internships are difficult because of the number of kids in AP classes. But if you had a second semester of really very few requirements, then you have a semester where you could do an internship somewhere. And this would be a nice lead-in to a, a potential company to say, here's the work I've done, do you have anything that I might be able to work on? I also think it gives parents and kids a different lens through which to view their course of study. Because I feel like there's four hundred courses in the program studies and people say, alright, well, I'll just go with this one because it says AP. And I'll go with this one because my buddy's in it. And I think if kids step back and say, alright, if we package it all these together and this is really an interest of yours, you might be able to something really neat with it, you know?
And I think that's the piece that I really like, it's, you know, not showing up on a college campus trying to figure out what you want to do in your life.
Yeah, if you don't know what background knowledge is, don't enter in it right away.
Because it's already a overwhelming experience, so I like that a lot. Okay, how many kids are doing independent study?
Probably fifteen or so. Yeah, we've had some great independent study projects. And one of them, you know, I think there's somebody who's doing an independent study on foreign language and medical profession, particularly with nursing. And so that kind of is what led, I think you were in the, the meeting to, you know, some of these alternative pathways that kids might identify. We had somebody years ago who was looking into music therapy. So, you know, they, they come up with these things that they, they see and might be interested in and, you know, if we could help them kind of navigate that path, I think it's great for us, I think it's great for them.
That's awesome. And I just think that this is one of the big benefits of our block schedule. Because this is not, while kids could do something similar to this in a more traditional schedule, not to this extent. And I think it really does allow our students to do something different as if, and as we think about the future of the district and we think about being an innovative district in a district that is a model for other schools across the state and the country, I think this is getting us to where we want to be.
Yeah, I think it provides a lot of opportunities for cross-pollination, cross-disciplines, teacher collaboration, students certainly are working groups on it. You could have science and then a English person tech, kind of tag teaming project, which I think is great. So I think it lends itself to a lot of behaviors that we're trying to encourage for our kids and a lot of project-based experiences.
Are there any other districts who've done something like this?
Nothing I'm aware of.
So this, this is a homegrown idea?
This is it. Now, there is, I mean, pathways is a thing, is a thing with the state, but it does, like I said earlier, it does kind of lend itself more to career and technical education in that aspect of it.
This is cool. I really, really like this and, and thank you for putting it together.
I mean, I'm not a blind squirrel, gets a nut, yeah.
I'm always, this, this program studies discussions, usually my favorite discussions that we have because it just drives home just how deep our academics are in the classical schools. Like this, this is, you look at this, this is, there's no other school, I mean, I'm sure some private schools may compete with this, but I mean, this is amazing and I don't think, I don't think people realize that. And I always go, like six years I've done the same thing, but I'll say, we should do a brochure and we should, you know, make sure parents know about this and do a menu and, and fancy glossy pictures and put this out there so people know just how, how good our schools are.
One of the things that we're working on doing, and I'm kind of waiting on this to get approved before we initiate it because I don't want to put things in there that get taken out, but our guidance secretary has offered to make it an electronic view look similar to what you might see at, at some of the private schools. That's a little bit different than a traditional public school, BS-driven program studies. Because I, I do think that we need to showcase better what kids are doing and who they're doing with and the level of depth that they can get into. The best thing about the block that, I mean, there's a ton of benefits to the block, I'm a huge proponent. But you don't track, you know, it is very much a choose your own education model. And a lot of schools, kids just don't have the ability to switch out of what they've been put into in the ninth grade because of the sequencing.
No, this is, this is tremendous. I, I very much am looking forward to hearing about its success.
Did you onboard like eighth graders with this as they come in or is this something kind of introduced more?
This, it's Alpha's brand new, so we have got.
Uh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we have a curriculum night coming up in two weeks on March eleventh. Eighth grade parents will be invited in, our guidance and our department heads will kind of give an overview of the four-year planning. And when I've been able to attend, I had a, I had a conflict last year and after work I'm going to have a conflict this year for scheduling. But I do often highlight how kids end up. And, and because a lot of, especially in the eighth grade parents meeting, people will come in already talking about advanced placement courses without any understanding of what advanced placement is, other than that's the word on the street. And how many AP courses can they take as a freshman? The answer is zero, right? I went to a seminar today at Stonehill about a potential AP sophomore English offering. I have no interest in bringing AP into the sophomore English curriculum, but I think pedagogically, some of the things that they're doing are really useful. So we do try, we do try to emphasize a couple of things with, with parents coming in. One is trust your recommendations, know that they're not written in stone. So if Ms. Amelia says that, you know, you should try this level first, it's a recommendation based on where she thinks you are right now. It doesn't mean that's where you're going to end up. And if you look at the track of our kids, if we have six sections of ninth grade English, three CP and three accelerated, with a hundred kids in the class, we have eighty juniors taking AP language. So their ability to get into that subject matter deeply and move up at their own pace is great. We also try to tell kids, you might be really strong in one area and not strong in the other, it's okay to mix levels. You don't have to feel like you are accelerated at everything or CP at everything, you know? Do some things that interest you and, and that's the big push is, is really getting kids to, and parents to, to not be as afraid of what they think has to happen in order for them to be successful. When I first started, twelve years ago, I had a school committee member ask, you know, if I could just outline the process to get into Harvard. And if I could do that, I wouldn't be working here because I'd be super rich. But I also don't think that that's the best choice for everyone. So kids really need to be selfish and, 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 you know, explore things that are of interest to them, get into those things deeply, work with people that they trust and care about and, and, and really make it their own and not make it into what they think is the cookie cutter model where Cohasset is supposed to.
So Les, can Mr. Car, anything?
It's great.
Principal Scott, question for you, so this is, the pathways are immediately accessible to a freshman? It's not just upperclassmen?
No, so this is over the course of four years. Now, some of the courses in those are required, like a bio cam.
Of course.
So you count those towards it, you don't have to.
Okay.
But especially a freshman coming off, you know, one of the things that we need to kind of wrestle with is kids come out of eighth grade research with these great civics projects. And is there a way for them to continue it when they come up into the high school or does that shut down when we do the required stuff? And then we get back into it. I think this is a good, good way to allow students to continue that path if they really find some success with it. Although I wouldn't have a freshman do an independent study, I don't think that's, they're ready for that yet. Okay, yeah, they could be sorry if I think about it. I, I always try to have kids think at least two years ago, you know? And where, where ultimately they want to end up. Now, that's going to change.
Right, and that's, that's my sort of, so I, I, I love the idea, right? I love the concept. I'm just, I'm, I'm just thinking like, how is like a fourteen-year-old really, like what do they really know about what they, they might have an interest in something, right? And like, are we, are we, I just, I, I don't want to like, I don't want to box them out of other disciplines because they thought they were interested in ones, they sort of like, sort of front-loaded a lot of that. But I also wouldn't want to, like, I, I also love the concept. There's just that, that like consideration of making sure we're not sort of allowing them to pigeonhole themselves.
Right.
For some reason that, you know, like, Mrs. Hannah alluded to undeclared major in college, like I, 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 I support that, right? Because I, I can see someone finding themselves in, in like college and figuring out what they want to do. I mean, I was undeclared. But, but, you, you see what I'm saying? So just, some, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just a little bit concerned about like, us like, I don't want, I don't want to be, to serve as like inadvertent limitation as well.
Right, yeah, we don't want to become a mini-college where you declare your major.
Exactly, right, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
This, to, 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 to really articulate a pathways possibility, you need to get through, your freshman and sophomore schedules are relatively set.
Sure, required, yeah.
When you get into junior year and senior year, there's a ton of freedom because the block pushes the, the requirements early. So you, the beginning of your junior year is really where you would start to say like, alright, what academic electives do I want? What non-academic electives do I want? What did I pick up in those first two years that I think might be interesting? Is there a cause I'm passionate about? Now, let me think about like, alright, if I'm going to do an elective, do I want to do global studies? Because I have an interest in international politics or do I want to do that because a bunch of my buddies said that that would be a cool thing to do?
Okay, so, so that makes more, that's why I asked, is it like immediately like ninth grade and you're sort of choosing this pathway? It's a little bit graduated in terms of like when that would happen because there's so much required coursework.
It's really like a beginning to junior year or end of sophomore year scheduling conversation with guidance to say, alright, like have you found anything that you think you might like?
Yeah, that, that, I think that, that alleviates a lot of my.
We had a great student years ago who would tell the story about how he came in as a math person and he was super psyched to do math and he wanted to be an engineer, you know, gung-ho on doing precalculus. And then he took Andy Thompson's bio class and decided environmental science is where he wanted to go and then he was going to go to Oregon and be an environmental science major. And then he decided he really wanted to be the athletic director at Notre Dame and he goes on this whole story. He actually started with the athletic director at Notre Dame and he goes on this whole story about how his journey evolved. And he said, and now I still think I want to be the athletic director at Notre Dame, so.
Perfect.
It's like everybody else's career paths go, you know, they, they, they don't, there's no linear path to it.
Perfect. Alright, so moving on to the, like I said, we can't, we can't vote on that tonight, so we'll, we'll do that the next meeting. Moving on to the cell phone update.
Yeah, I think Amanda said it well. I think she, she put it as kids, it's been well enforced and it has. But I don't, I would put it as it's been very well received. And I'm really impressed with the level of maturity that our kids have. I've only had one question from a parent and I've had one question from a student, same family. And they were pretty straightforward questions, what do I do if, or what does my, my child do if? And the lack of questions to me means that they understand the why. You know, they don't, they don't, whenever you run into a student controversy, they need to know why that's a rule. You know, why can't we have coffee in class? Why, you know, can't we wear hats in the building? Whatever the rule is, like, it make, it makes sense to me. We don't need to, we've had those discussions, but kids know that. And so even Mr. Ford was telling me earlier, he has a freshman wellness class or a group and he had forty-five kids take a survey on how they felt the cell phone policy was going and, you know, fifty or sixty percent were in favor. He then had them watch Screenagers and gave them the survey after and eighty percent of them agreed that it was a good thing. So, you know, there's a little bit of. So, you know, there's a little bit of, uh, you know, I'd say that the kids who are really pushing it, I could number on one hand. There's really, there's a lot of chatter in the, in the cafeteria. I'm up there every day, I've never seen it as an issue, I've never seen the break as an issue. Um, it's louder, you know, um, it's, it's just more vibrant. And, you know, I can see the, the claim that my students might want to make that they want it back at lunch and break. And I'm, I'm very willing to entertain that, you know, based on what the committee decides and what the data comes back. I don't, I haven't had any negative interactions with it at all. Um, and I'm pleased that the, the committee wanted to do it a little bit longer. We would have ended it by now in, in my original plan. They want to continue it to the end of the quarter and that hasn't been an issue at all. So all the feedback that I've got, I emailed the committee and the kids on it and said, get, you know, I'm going to go in front of school committee. They're going to ask, let me know what you want me to say. And it was just crickets, you know, everything's fine.
Great, well, uh, any comments or questions, just please ask it, Will. Principal Scott about cell phone policy? Pilot, pilot program?
I want to oppose one at home.
I know, I can't get my thirteen year olds to buy into my hand.
What is the, like if they're caught with their phone, what's the, does it just go to the office?
It could, um, it kind of depends on the context, you know, if the kid's pulling it out to check the time, puts it back in his pocket. I'm not making a big deal of it. If the kids, you know, if there's a group of kids standing around it, I might look across the aisle and just say like, I'm watching you. But if, if a kid is constantly out and doing what they're not supposed to, yeah, we've had some phones in the office. But again, I could number those on one hand. You know, and usually it's just a conversation with the student, like, what do you do? Do you really need it? Oh, I don't know. So, which I, you know, I, I like the approach that we've taken because I think it's very respectful with the kids and I think they appreciate that. You know, it's not, um, a lot of schools do pouches, you know, Brockton, East Boston, they presented a couple of weeks ago at MSAA, which is the, School Administrative Association and that to me gives a bit of a punitive, we don't trust you, therefore we're going to lock it up first. We just basically said to the teachers, you control your own domain and kids put it in your backpack and don't let it see it. If you need it for some reason, just ask somebody. Um, and, you know, if it's a reasonable request, we'll, we'll figure it out. Someone says a coach is going to call me at twelve o'clock, yeah, use my office. You know, come in, use, use the school one if you want. But if that's what they have and, and you want to take that call, by all means. I think they, they appreciate that.
The kids know how to get into the pouches, by the way.
Of course, yeah, and then it becomes an exercise in who can throw a pouch. So for five thousand bucks, just, you know, broken a bunch of pouches.
That was a truly, uh, community led initiative and, uh, it's been interesting to see how it's been going. So thanks for the update, Principal Scott. And, uh, I loved your, uh, first text to me when I first started that's noticeably loud in the cafeteria. That was like, uh, that was like the number one impetus behind it, right? Again, interaction, face to face, interaction rather than watching a screen, right?
Yeah.
So thank you so much, Principal Scott, for being here tonight. Appreciate that. And like I said, uh, you, uh, uh, are welcome to come next time, but we'll, we'll make sure it's on the agenda to approve the program of studies. Um, next time around and don't forget to communicate to me when you want to put the athletics on the agenda as well.
Sure.
All right.
Chairman, there's just one comment.
Oh, yes, thank you.
The person didn't leave their address, I did ask them for it, but they, they haven't given it to me. But this is back to the MCAS. Um, and so it's, uh, Mariah T. Um, do you feel that adding the language, and we probably already answered this, but I want to give the, they did make the comment. Do you feel that adding the language around taking the MCAS as a competency determination participation is circumventing the vote that was overwhelmingly passed?
So that's the question, right? And, and the vote itself, I think was misinterpreted by a lot of people. I think a lot of people thought the MCAS was going away forever. And it didn't, it just removed it as you have to pass in order to graduate. Um, so if, if the, and this is where I defer to the committee, if the spirit of the town is we don't want MCAS at all, you don't get that. But I don't have to include it in the, as a participation requirement. You know, that doesn't bother me one way or the other, but it will. If there are large numbers of people who decide they're not going to show up for it, it will impact a lot of families by actually.
Okay, thank you. And, um, oh, you already asked for the address.
I did, for having.
The other thing that I'd add for any of the parents watching, uh, we are coming up on course scheduling. So I'm going to send out an email to families about what that process is. We have a course fair scheduled for next week, um, during our utility period. And I'm inviting all parents into that to talk with their kids and the teachers about what potential courses are offered, what they might be interested in. So that people can kind of go into course selection, um, with an educated view of what they might want to take. Because that's their best chance of getting the courses that they requested for.
Okay, thank you, Principal Scott, and, uh.
Orchard Drive, if you could just give us a number, that would be helpful too.
A, a number in your, you just, listen, if, um, I should have said this at the beginning of the meeting. So if you're going to participate, you have to state your name and your address. So, uh, initials don't do and just streets don't do. Um, it's, it's for the record, it's for the minutes that become an official memorialization in the meeting. We're not picking on you, everyone's required to do that, um, just like at town meeting.
And I didn't encourage anyone who's nervous about the MCAS that just can make.
Absolutely, so for anything to do with the high school, contact Principal Scott, right? I mean, so always open door, uh, and, uh, you know how to reach him. But thank you for participating. Myra, Myra Toffey, Nine Orchard Drive, thank you so much, appreciate it. And thank you for your input and your participation. So thank you, Principal Scott, appreciate it. Uh, moving into the next block, which is budget resources and governance. We turn the meeting to our Director of Finance and Operations, Susan Owens.
Thank you. This is going to be as interesting as everything else prepared tonight. Because I was going to do a small piece of this after you. My computer is about to die.
Okay.
Could I do the fee piece first?
Yes.
Okay, if that's okay, only because I want to make sure that I can share my screen.
So, Ms. Owens, Superintendent Shannon was just going to present on the fees, on the potential fee increases that we're looking at to partially address the, um, the shortfall, so please do that.
Yes.
Superintendent Shannon?
Thank you. Um, so, yes, I was going to share this as part of, um, Mrs. Owens' presentation, but just to make sure we can get it in. We are, as part of the budget process, going to be discussing fees. And so in order to do that in a timely way, because the fee discussion in your eventual votes on that fee discussion do impact our, both our ability to finalize our budget for FY twenty-six, but also it impacts the number of reductions that we may or may not have to make. And we feel that it's really important that if we have fewer fee increases or additions and have to have additional reductions, that it's only fair that we let those staff members know sooner than later that that could be an impact on them. And if you choose to do, accept as many of the fees as we present, then it has fewer impacts on staffing. And that also is important for them to know because I think it alleviates a lot of stress. So that's why I think it's important to today, just review those fees that are going to be up for conversation. So that at the next meeting, which is next Wednesday night, we can have a full discussion about each of these fees. And then at the meeting on March nineteenth, vote upon those fees. That'll give us a really good timeline for moving forward with the budget. So just as a reminder, these are the fees that we're going to be discussing. And so one of them is kindergarten fees. Uh, in FY twenty-four, the district, and I'm not going to go through this all in detail, but just as a reminder that, in FY twenty-four, the district moved away from requiring them less than a three thousand dollar kindergarten fee for full day kindergarten. That does have a significant impact on the budget. And so re-instituting that kindergarten fee could bring us approximately, if you went back to three thousand, uh, three thousand dollars per student, could bring us close to three hundred thousand dollars to the district.
Is, is that qualified, no, I'm sorry, just is that qualified by, uh, the change in chapter seventy funding? Cause there's a offset there, right? We'd lose some chapter seventy funding if we.
Yes, we need to figure out exactly what that would be and we'll have that for you for next week.
Yeah, we want to know what that meant.
Yep. Um, also, we were looking at transportation fees. We are towards the high end of transportation fees. The only district that has a higher transportation fee right now, um, actually not until September. Will be hang up, they've gone to three hundred and sixty dollars per student for riding the bus, um, with a cap of six hundred and twenty-five. So in all of these cases, we've tried to give you as much information. And we're actually also gathering some information around which schools still have kindergarten fees as well. Um, so we'll give that to you. But area information is also helpful because, you know, to see if we're at the top of a, a fee schedule versus in the middle or at the bottom, I think is really important. Um, also have provided you with what potential transportation fee increases would do in terms of revenue impact. And again, they're based on current ridership as opposed, we don't know yet because we haven't, normally we would be putting out transportation, um, requests so that parents could start signing up for transportation. But we are holding on that until this conversation and decision are made. Also looking at athletic fees. Let's just share this a little bigger. And what we are currently, we are in the middle of the pack for our athletic fees for our first sport. Closer to the bottom, if you have a second sport, again, closer to the bottom for a third sport. So the proposal was actually that we create a two-tiered fee structure for athletics. Um, with hockey swim and football being in tier two at a higher cost because of the additional cost to run those sports. Um, others would be tier one at three hundred and fifty dollars. They would all still have a family cap. Um, the one caveat is to mention that the ski team, which currently pays two hundred and fifty dollars and it gets a ski pass to Blue Hills as part of that, two hundred and fifty dollars would go to the three fifty, but be responsible for paying for their own ski pass. Um, we did look at gate fees. We are very much aligned with other districts in terms of their gate fees. And so we're actually not recommending right now that we shift our gate fees. But we thought it was important because it's a fee we currently collect and we actually bring in about three thousand dollars with gate fees to, to look at that and, and evaluate it. Um, we are actually proposing a new fee in terms of student activity fee. We are looking at a sixty dollar per student fee at the middle school and a hundred dollar per student fee at the high school. Um, and actually I saw today some data around other schools that have student activity fees. Um, and I was actually surprised by how many schools do this. Um, and so this would be another fee to consider adding that we don't currently have. Student parking, um, many of our area schools do charge their seniors and their driving juniors to park. Um, it's not something we have done here in Cohasset for, I don't know how long, but a long time. Um, and so we are proposing that we institute a student parking fee where our students would be paying two dollars per day to park at the high school. It would be prorated based on when they start driving to school. Um, and that could potentially bring in, oh, you know, close to forty thousand dollars as well. And we are looking at our building rental fees. We do earn again around forty thousand dollars in building rental. And we are looking at what an increase to those fees could do, um, in order to bring in additional revenue. And so those are the fees that, you know, if you could do some thinking about that between this week and next Wednesday, we can have a more broad discussion, we can answer questions, we'll bring a little bit more information as well. And then on March nineteenth, we'll ask for a vote on the different fee structures.
Superintendent Shannon, would you mind taking those slides?
Yes.
And compiling some sort of, you know, file that we can, um, email to the district, just notifying them that we're talking about these fees at the next meeting?
Yes.
Um, so that everyone's aware of that. And then, um, I can also help you drop the messaging too in terms of like, you know, and then that we're going to be voting about my meeting. Just so everyone has the information. Um, and that'd be great. And then we'll have more of a discussion next time on that.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Nice question. Sure. Um, for the additional information, to the extent that we can show how these fees are related to the costs of the providing services and the, for example, transportation.
Yeah.
Uh, that'd be helpful. Uh, from a philosophical standpoint, you want your fees to be aligned to cost. I know we're in a dire budget situation, and so my inclination is to turn them all up to eleven and see what we can do. But, um, you know, I, I would like to make sure that they have a relation to what they're, what, what services are being provided. And, you know, it's another tool for having a larger discussion with the town and the citizenry generally about what the schools cost to run, so.
You can do that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Superintendent Shannon. Uh, Ms. Owens, we can go back to the monthly update now.
So just to, to go over the FY, um, twenty-five, January, I mean, it's report. As we all know, there was a shortfall, a shortfall, um, has increased slightly. It went from seven hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and fifty-seven dollars to approximately seventeen thousand. One of that is due to utilities, uh, just to supply materials. Um, there's still some things, even if the, even if the budget's frozen, um, there's still things that we, we have to do. You know, what we quite do, um, need to provide supply materials to us. We, we need to, um, we have a lot of stuff getting ready for graduation to have to put through. So there's still some things that, even though we're frozen, we have to move forward with, um, which is why the deficit is, has grown. Um, we are closely monitoring it, we're reviewing all our salaries in our conferences, um, but unfortunately, it's rising. The special education, um, also we, you know, monitored closely. There was a shortfall of a hundred and eighty thousand, I think five, but now, um, which remained unchanged. Um, the last month, transportation has increased from fifty-six thousand, four fifty-four to one hundred and eleven, three, four. Not going to get into details, um, especially transportation, just based on student, but you could see our budget line on shortfalls. Our tuition, our utilities, it's the same areas of tuition, of transportation, of stolen supplies, materials and some salaries. We have course credit, course, course home change is happening right now, um, the window hasn't closed yet. Um, but that's also has increased some of our, um, some of our shortfalls. Again, same information, just showing you, um, each, each school and what their budget was in, um, percent used. And some information on circuit breaker, um, for anyone who doesn't, you know, understand circuit breaker, Massachusetts program. Thirty-five percent of eligible special education costs that exceed, um, four times the state average for pupils, approximately fifty, fifty thousand dollars is the base rate. Uh, capital, um, we're still working on capital, I believe, that will be next week. But this is where we are with our capital requests. The security enhancements, we got the quotes in today, I think it was about six, six thousand or sixty-five hundred dollars, um, for the two additional PA system for safety and security. But Mrs. Shannon and I are meeting capital, I believe, this is next week. Uh, grants, again, um, very, very limited, um, what we receive for grants, um, unfortunately, she has a little bit of a slowdown. They can see where our grants are. A grant fund across, we're one point three positions in our district. Are evolving again, um, you can see for some areas that, like our after school program, um, we only receive transfers from that program. Quarterly, well, if we're lucky, um, just to, I think, lack of staffing in the town hall. But we are bringing in the revenue, we just haven't been transferred over for the town. And then same thing with the athletics, um, winter season's just about over. So we're bringing in these, we're evolving. And then, same thing with the athletics, winter season's just about over, so we will bring in what fees are revolving. And this kind of goes along with what Mr. Dyle said, of, let's make sure what our fees are covering equally. And revolving, so, about approximately twenty-two point nine personnel. Just to break down our F T Es, meal changes, obviously, we haven't added any staff. Sixty percent of our budget is regional education. Salaries, breakdown of F T Es per school, and how each school position is funded, whether it be by the school budget or by a grant revolving. Again, there's, there's no changes happening here. Let's just say it's a call, our F T Es and headcounts are broken down. Our enrollment as of February first, thirteen ninety-nine. And here's a month-to-month look at our enrollment. And our utility, again, our utility costs are up. Our usage is slightly up, it's been a, been a very cold winter. Electric rates for now are doing pretty good. And still continuing to grow. And then, our, our gas utilities, this is through December, we have used less in gas, less burns, and we have spent less. But my guess is, with the last month, so we've had a really cold weather, that we're gonna see a jump in these numbers going forward. Quick update on our food service, I'm just giving you a comparison of meal counts. Comparison's from last year, we were at fifty-nine, January, we're at fifty-nine percent participation, which is horrendous. December, we were at sixty percent. It could basically be just based on meal surge, and that we had the holiday break in there. And then, just a few happy thoughts, happy thoughts. Sometimes I always deliver a bad news. Here is our food service director, ready to come along, making his fresh squeezed orange juice. They don't entry school without juice. If you have not tried the orange juice, you absolutely should try it. It's delicious, it's very sweet, even though it's natural, it's all natural. The kids love it. The elementary students do participate in ma- in, in making it. But he's just kind of showing what's being done here. And here, students enjoying getting their, their fresh orange juice at the elementary level. Just a couple of highlights, you know, recently, they did a pineapple fried rice at the middle high school. If you haven't eaten or tried lunch at the middle high school, you absolutely should stop in. It's better than some restaurant foods. And then, here they are with fresh baked homemade muffins. Transportation, just, you know, we're currently reviewing our transportation needs, food increase and ridership. Some of this is a repeat of Uphurst, it was retired permanently, we're forning the town to serve us. And hoping that we can find it a new bus to Capital for next year. The conclusion of the, you know, so far, there are concerns, we've talked about each month. Utilities, tuitions, transportation, and salaries, our budget is frozen. There are still things going through, go through the approval process of the superintendent with everything that, that, that needs to be approved and, and paid for. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Any questions from Ms. Owens? We're going off, we go alphabetical order, Mr. Carr?
No, thank you.
Mr. Dial?
No questions, thank you, Ms. Owens.
Ms. Hannah?
No question.
Mrs. Lasky?
No questions. Thank you for the pictures, those are fun.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Moving on, we got reports from subcommittees, these are on positions, if you want to have any report, just report, I will.
I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the next block. I don't know of any topics that, usually, they wouldn't have anything. No? Approval minutes, we do have three separate minutes to approve. Those are from the January eighth, two thousand twenty-five, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, and February sixth, fifth, two thousand twenty-five, respectively. At those meetings, all members are present except for the February fifth, two thousand twenty-five, meeting at which our vice chair was not present, so you need to recede yourself from that vote, Mr. Dial.
I abstained.
So, we'll just move in chronological order, and because one of our members will be abstaining, I'll just take three separate votes. Are there any questions, comments, additions, revisions to the January eighth, two thousand twenty-five minutes as presented by our secretary, Mr. Carr?
Can I just mention one thing?
Of course.
On the day, sorry, I'll tell you which room we're talking about here, on the day where we talked about the art program, and three very elegant students came in. We have butchered their names in the minutes. Could someone, they're italicized, if someone could help us correct the spelling of their names, that would be great.
Any questions for our secretary relative to the January eighth, two thousand twenty-five minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the secretary? Motion been made by Mr. Carr, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lasky, all in favor, aye? All opposed? Sentience, motion carries by a vote of five members. Next is the, and those meetings will be approved, posted, next is the, the meetings, minutes for January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Regular school committee. Are there any questions, comments, revisions, secretary? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the secretary?
Salute.
Motion made by Mr. Dial, and second? Seconded by Ms. Lasky, all in favor, aye? Opposed, extension, motion in answer carries, minutes approved and be posted. Lastly, the February fifth, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes. Are there any comments or questions for the secretary? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Been, motion's been made by Ms. Lasky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carr, all in favor, aye? All opposed? Sentience?
One.
Motion carries by a vote of four members, one in sanction. Minutes are approved, and will be posted.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to continue to thank Kathy Box for her excellent, wonderful fielding.
Well, we thank both of you.
She puts up with me.
Miss, Miss Box certainly.
She is not the delay, I am the delay.
It is a, it is a thankless task, and we're very appreciative, but we keep
Not towards the car, it takes.
We are, that's true. That's true, we give thanks, so, but we are up to date now, I think, on that, so.
I'll double-check the list. I want to make sure we have everything posted once we get these up, but I think we are.
Future agenda items, anyone have any suggestions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the, there is no reason to move into executive session this time, so, we'll, we'll move into
Salute.
Seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Salute.
Motion's made by Mr. Dial, is there a second? Second by Ms. Lasky, all in favor, aye? All opposed? Sentience, motion carries, and all, obviously, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Have a pleasant evening. Please always reach out with any questions or concerns to central officer of the school committee.